I'd like to call the meeting of the Committee of the Whole Order at 6:30 here December 18th. And we can start with roll call.
All right, Michael Murray.
Here.
Travis Scholz.
Here.
Richard Harrington.
Present.
John Glenn.
Here.
Sean Zabinski. Nicole Hart.
Here.
Lamont Kiefer.
Here.
Nellie Fader.
Here.
Dean Peterson.
Sidney Cook's not here, so I guess we'll skip that. We'll move on to Molly, Frasier.
All right, time to stop sharing. Oh. Stop, okay.
I'm talking to Molly.
Have a safe trip, Nick.
Thank you.
It looks like the burial apartments are in the TID8 amendment, for those who are wondering. Back to... So I'll first present the cash and investments report for November 30th. I would answer any questions or entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve and second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carried.
Okay, then you have my written report, which is rather long, so I'm not going to go over all of it. But my November and December have been mostly consumed by mass transit. And there's a lot happening there. So I underwent a compliance audit on December 6th. And there will be a lot of things coming out of that that you'll see before you in the coming months. We need to update... Sorry, I got caught up in... Our Title VI policy, which is our anti-discrimination, that hasn't been done since 2013. And they're requesting that we update that. I'm actually meeting with the state on Wednesday to get that rolling. You'll see that in front of you. Later on the agenda, we have a request to increase the agency fares. With the RFP, we now have a new provider who will take over on January 1st. We have not only increased our hours for service, but the cost for those hours has increased due to the new provider. So we have to find a way to fund this operation and to make it sustainable. So we levy traditionally $45,000. This year, we're going to be about $128,000 short before the 45. But, so we've got to come up with a way to increase our fares in order to sustain the service.
Did you factor in the increase in fares due to the increased hours?
Yes, I did. I did the fares times our projected increase in hours. So I did do that. So in order to increase the fares to the public, we will need to have a public hearing. That will be coming before you in January. We are proposing to increase each fare by $1. So something just to have in the back of your mind. Other than that, real estate taxes are out. We've got lots of people coming in to pay them. And pet licenses are the same. So it's a busy time in our office. Anyone have any questions for me? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Joe, Parks Department.
Good evening. Nothing too much reported here, just getting through the year with our Parks Department, just busy. We had a lot of shelter rentals this past year, in this past couple of months here with holidays coming up. So busy cleaning the shelters and working with the different lighting groups in our parks. At Winnebago Park and Gillette, thanks to the volunteer groups, really nice this year at both parks. So work with them. New ball field construction is ongoing, kind of slowed down with the weather. But if you've been out there, it has been some progress made out there on Eagleson and Flair. So working through that. Recreation programs, we're in our winter programming. We'll take a little break here with our weekend activities with the holidays. But we do have adult basketball that started last week with 14 teams at the high school. It's good to see that many teams still participating in that. We have sign-ups for volleyball going on here for indoor women's that start after the new year in January. We'll start full swing again on Sundays at the high school with our activities. Continuing to work at cleaning the fire station there. I got some different, working on some different quotes. We have lighting, hopefully this week, getting the lighting upgraded and things like that. I have moved my office down to the old fire station, so if you're looking for me, that's where I'm located now. Same phone number for our office and Parks Department there, so same as has been. And email and so forth, so continuing to work with that transition as well to that. So recreation park, you can see the activities we had in December. January, we have a full month of activities there with the auction, pool tournament, rabbit show, and gun show. So it'll be busy. Like to thank General Mosier, Mayor Murray, I know he'll probably speak on tomorrow. But what a great event they hosted yesterday at Rec Park with the special needs Christmas. And actually, the old fire station come in handy for that. So I know the crew, all the volunteers to help with that. Use that as the station to get all the donations, gifts, presents, raft and stuff. The last three, it's been a long, long process. So thanks for all those volunteers that did that for our community with that. So high school, middle school gymnastics exhibit building in Ice Center is full swing with activity. So busy place if you haven't been out to Rec Park, it's just busy all the time. So I'm just taking care of the clients there, so. Any questions or concerns?
Block building out at Ball Complex, that's the rest bathrooms?
The block building, that's being done right now. That is our concession stand with a press box, bathrooms, restrooms. And then off the side is two pavilion, a pavilion, it's kind of a overhang on each side that has some picnic tables and stuff there. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Governor. Next is Kirk, Public Works, E. T.
Give me, trying to make it short. We're done with leave pickup. We did help...
What do we do with those people? What are you doing? There's some, just don't buy me this big pile in the curb area.
Uh...
What?
Probably not going to get to it, but give me the, do you have the address, Lamont?
In the 1300 block.
13, okay. I'll try to see if they can go out there to lower.
Yeah, all right. Or do we have to go to the neighbor and tell them they got to do something with them, or?
No, we'll try to take care of that.
Thank you.
If there, if you do have anybody that's sitting out there with a pile by chance, I believe that we advertise that we're done. But obviously, we'll try to accommodate those people if there is some. We did help install the new banners on the streetlights. I don't know if people noticed that. It's a nice upgrade. We did have a great job in supporting the holiday train. We did receive our chipper attachment. If you go down on the end of East Monawha by the airport, they're out there cutting down the land that was donated by the farmers. And the stumps are still remaining, but there was a lot of brush after they went in there and cut the trees before they gave it to us. So we're just trying to get that to a point where we can probably mow it or just maintain it a little better. And same area, Gerkey Excavating is chipping a brush pile, kind of had some mechanical issues. So it's kind of hit or miss when they have been going. And I haven't talked to staff to see if they're out there today.
I'll be.
Were they?
Yeah, they got a lot of...
Lots, yeah, they probably only have three, three days max. That's about all the money we have, so we're going to see what we can get done for that. Might be some left. Sewer department, doing a lot of maintenance inside, painting and fabricating. The sewer plant's taken on the stairs as you come up here. The guardrails are something that we'd like to get in compliance with code. So they've taken on that for fabricating those new framework and railings. Water department, probably the big news there is Mark Raisin will be retiring early February. Just short of 30 years with the department. So it's going, we started the interviews today, actually, with the internal candidates. We are fully prepared that the candidates that we have internally are, we will fulfill that position internally. All good candidates, going to be a really tough decision. But we are trying to hopefully make that decision this week and then announce it at Public Works next following week. And the Lake Committee, tentatively scheduled for 1/18/24 at 5 o'clock in this room. Any questions?
Congrats, Mr. Raisin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Governor.
Good evening, Scott.
Evening.
Um, so we got an opening with our patrol staff. We started off with a Brandon Belacera, dis background, psychological, physical, I was testing everything, it's favorable. So that is good. He will be starting with us January 2nd, attend the police academy in February. Our new canine, Raiden, continues to recover from his injured paw. He'll be in the cast for the next several weeks, and then he'll be reevaluated down in Madison. We have an open part-time janitor position, custodial position. So Becky helped us out, putting on IDs. So far, we got over 30 applications for that, so that's good. It's open to January 5th. So we'll find some through that process. While, I guess a shout out to Scott Donovan. I mean, he's, I think he works for Kirk, but he helps us out at the police department with pretty much anything we need. And he's picking up custodial duties as well for us, so we really appreciate that. New positions in the police department. January, as of January 1st, Paul Sloan will move to lieutenant over investigations. Lindsey Stotinger will be our new investigator. And Audrey Gomez is moving to community service officer. Holiday train went well, holiday parade went well. Kirk and I spoke, well, kind of at length, we had a meeting about the safety concerns that I have with the parade route on Superior Avenue. We formulated a plan, talked about different options and whatever. And that's something that we're going to suggest to you folks. As we move forward, we just want to have a solid plan together on alternative things that we can do regarding our parade routes. Annual giving tree is completed, 120 gifts were given out today for our children. And just a reminder to everybody, our office will be closed Monday for Christmas and then January 1st, obviously, for New Year's. Any questions off? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I know the chamber and from the chair, we know about the... She's not here for this, so. Going down to the general part of the agenda, number nine, a seeking approval of ARPA funds to purchase three additional radar speed signs to be erected on Superior Avenue.
Yes, so we have six speed signs that we purchased. And they're up in the city, but we've gotten a lot of great feedback from those. One thing that's really cool about these signs is that they're, they collect data while they're, I mean, when you drive by them, they're flashing and they're warning that you're speeding too fast. But it also collects data. It's counting how many cars go by, gives you the date, the time, the speeds of all these vehicles. And we're able to, they're all connected to the cloud, so the internet. So we're able to log into the system and see when the hotspots are, when the times are, and when these vehicles are speeding and doing whatever. And then we're able to take that data and allocate our resources in certain spots. Because we hear complaints about speeding all the time, you know? This gives us real-time data in certain areas where we can put our officers in certain spots for traffic enforcement.
One thing I noticed about the signs, they flash yellow for five miles and then they flash red.
Yeah, so also with the cloud, you can go in there and change settings. When they first got set up, I think the default setting was, so if the speed limit was 25, if you go in 25, they're flashing at you. We didn't want that, obviously. So, yeah, they're adjustable. You can even, there's limits on them too. So you'll get some people, and it's rare, that will see how fast they can go. You see what I'm saying? They'll test their vehicles and whatever. It's usually the younger crowd. But we can, we have cutoffs, so we'll shut it off at, you know, 50 miles an hour or whatnot. So it's not... So we do have two older signs, which is why I'm standing here today talking about this. One is on Superior, just over here. One is on Butts Avenue, just south of the high school. They either work sometimes or not at all. They're old, they're over 10 years old. So what we would like to do is purchase three more signs to replace those. One would replace the one on Butts Avenue. And the other one would replace, the other two would replace this one on Superior Avenue. One likely before St. Paul School, one on the other side of St. Paul School.
I can tell you, I will take the, when we have class, I take the driving students out on the patio. And I always liked it when that one would work.
Yeah.
Because they can see very clearly, you know, just how fast people are going on Superior Avenue, you know? And they start realizing, you know, what they're doing. And like I said, it's hit and miss. It works and it doesn't work, and it works in another...
Right, and you know, it's, it's old. I mean, it's, it's, you know? So these would be the same brands, they'd be on the same cloud system, we would try harder than that as well.
I'm guessing, so since you put them up, has there been enough time? Can you tell that because they're up, people are slowing down? Can you see the trends since they were installed?
Um...
Are they a deterrent in themselves, I guess is the question?
A little too soon for that, I think, because we didn't really have the data before the signs were up. You know what I mean? We just had the complaints. I can tell you that the complaints, in particular on LaGrange and Butts Avenue, have almost come to a halt. I haven't heard anything. And we would hear about it all the time.
And I can tell you it had an impact on me the other day, because running between the fairgrounds and the restaurant yesterday. You know, in a hurry because we got so much going on with the Christmas. I pulled out of there and it triggered me immediately.
Everybody does. People are, you know, I've said this to you guys before, I mean, people don't intentionally speed, not, some do. But other people, you get in your car and you're driving, you go to the store, you got to get the lettuce, you got to get the whatever, you're just driving. And you don't know what you're doing until you got a sign flashing, you look down, and you're like, oh.
Yep.
Okay. And that's what those signs are designed to do. There are several people I've talked to, some might be in this room, they said, yep, they got me, you know? I was driving and it's flashing at me, so that's the purpose of them.
Does the system also show the response of the driver once it starts flashing? Is whether they slow down?
That I, that I don't know. Maybe. I don't, I don't know. I'm not the administrator of them, but it would not surprise me if it did.
That would be some information that would be...
Yeah.
Kind of beneficial to see how effective they are.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, to see if the reaction, if there's a reaction from initial...
Yeah.
I like the sun flashing better than the yellow. I mean, the blue, the lights behind me.
Yeah, it's a better light, right?
So how long have they been operated?
About six weeks, about a half.
Okay, so there isn't hardly enough time to...
Yeah, they're there for...
To be honest, we had enough time to, that you could actually say, yeah, and it slowed people down X amount of miles per hour since they've been installed.
Yeah.
I mean, that'd be a nice statistic to have as a selling point.
Sure.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to make the second, committee.
How much do we have in ARPA funds that he wants to cut out?
311,000.
And we're okay, because we talked about possibly spending some of that somewhere else? Is this going to be the right place to take this from?
No, I'd be okay with that. Just a question.
No, good question, actually.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Next item on is number 10, Allied Energy easement approval.
So Allied Energy has asked for easement. It's on the west side of the wastewater treatment plant. And there's existing power poles there. For some reason, there's no easement on record. They want to move the above ground to underground. So this is, went through Public Works and they're recommending that we proceed with easement. City Council, obviously, would sign all those documents. That's why it's coming here and have that on record.
Motion to approve. Anyone motion to approve and a second? Any further discussion?
And just by the way, that it's the power for the wastewater treatment plant. Yeah. Minor detail, minor detail. Could have minded that.
So any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Well, Lamont, we're getting some solar panels out there around...
So next item is a resolution declaring the official intent to reimburse its expenditures for the proceeds of...
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion approved and a second. Any further discussion?
We talked about this last time, it's just the...
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. And the next item, number 12, resolution increasing agency fare for the city of Toma share ride service.
Just a quick background, we have one agency contract with Inclusa where they have a special contracted service with our shared ride. We are required, in order to keep our funding, to charge them a rate that is higher than the public rate. Because we have to show that they are funding their own service. They are not just paying the fare, but they are paying enough to cover the wages and the expenses to cover their contract. So that is why their rate is $10 versus the individual rider is $2.75, $3.75.
And what is an agency rate? Who is it for?
It's, so that we are, we have one contracted agency, it's Inclusa.
Okay.
It's the agency that we contract with.
And who's the end user of an agency rate?
It's those who get, are provided services by Inclusa, and I believe they serve aging and disabled population.
So this is for the people who need special, right, she, I had to call on, I did not understand what an agency rate was. It's the rate that's charged a disabled person to ride, but that, but that person doesn't pay the rate. This company pays the rate on behalf of that rider. And we're just upping the rate that we're authorizing this company...
Right, because they're contracting us to be their provider of transportation to their clients. We, they have to pay enough to cover then the associated expenses with those rides. So it's a separate rate that's contracted. We have been in touch with them, they are aware. This is in line with other services in our area. So this is what they're paying in other areas as well.
So it's not going up to the end user? The disabled person's not going from $6 to $10? What's being paid on their behalf is going from $6 to $10. Two Abbey Vans now are carrying.
To City of Toma.
To City of Toma. That will get paid to Abbey Van.
It gets, yeah, sorry, paid to Abbey Vans, reimbursed to City of Toma.
So do we get something from them to show who is D. J., who they're covering under Tenda? I'm confused.
So, so they have clients that they serve. So then they are booking the rides for their clients. And they are paying for the service on behalf of their clients. So we're only dealing with Inclusa, we're not dealing with individuals for this rate.
Got it, thank you.
So we need a motion?
So a motion to approve the increase from $6 to $10 for that agency fare.
The company Lamont?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, do you say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. The next item, number 13, resolution authorizing payment of monthly bills.
Pay the bills.
Second.
Motion from Lamont, they pay the bills. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. The next item is the second article dealer license application for Creative Tech Team LLC of Toma.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Number 15, approval of ARPA funds for judicial software.
Need to approve.
Motion approved.
Second.
And a second, committee. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to step in on this one. This one, I've been kind of looking into, um, thank you. I'm going to try to be as concise and as in-depth as I possibly can without making this too complicated. Omnigo is the existent company that is used. Omnigo is a system that our municipal court system uses. So I'm going to use me as the example. Say, six years ago, I got a $1,000 citation. And I set up a payment plan, and I was not following through on the payment plan. It would go into this Omnigo system that I was behind, or you know, that I had this arranged payment plan. If it went, I believe it's beyond three years, it then goes into state collections. But nevertheless, this Omnigo keeps track of the money owed to the City of Toma by delinquent people in their fines. As we move forward, this system, with the police department switching their system, I think you switch to, what's the system you switched to?
Central Square.
Central Square, okay. They use a reporting, it's called TRACS. The judicial system will now use, they'll be using something called TIPS. Again, everything has an acronym. This TIPS will do exactly the same thing, okay? TIPS will do exactly the same thing. If I get a ticket this year, and I made a payment arrangements, and I didn't follow through on payment arrangements, and I still owe the City of Toma. It's going to keep track of the fact that I have not paid off my debt to the City of Toma. Three, four years from now, it'll all be in there. It'll all still be in there. Going forward. Here's the thing about Omnigo. What this is looking to do is, and Omnigo is basically historical data, is all it's going to represent at this point in time. It's historical data. In other words, it's information that on the people, and I'm just, remember, I'm using hypothetical dates here. I'm using hypothetical. But if on December 31st, we said to Omnigo, we're done, we're not using you anymore. We're now only using TIPS from January 1st forward, okay? All the information still in Omnigo is in Omnigo, but we don't use their system anymore, okay? So thereby, it's not, it's not accessible to us. However, what we are trying to research right now, and I am in the process of trying to research this, that there should be a cumulative report. That we should be able to request a query from Omnigo telling us who still owes us money from when, okay? When we have that report, it's might, it's going to require legwork on our part through the municipal courts to...
Transcribe it.
Transcribe it and transfer it over, okay? Where my mind won't wrap around this is, we should have this anyway. Because if I'm going to go in on a business tomorrow... We should always have a... We should have some level of cumulative report telling us, so, and then where the other problem comes in. If we approve this $6,000 to continue on Omnigo, here you go, Kirk. The proclivity for all of the back debts being cleared up in the next year, pretty much 0%. The likelihood of them being cleared up in the next year is 0%, which means, you know what's going to happen next year?
They'll come back for another $6,000.
They're going to come back for another $6,000 to keep this...
And how, and how much is owed? It might, if it's $3,000, we want $6,000 to know.
That's, I currently have an email out to the city, to the municipal court clerk, trying to find out that number.
And it's probably the notes that are going to be written off anyway, because you're probably never going to collect it.
Well, and I would like to amend, if we could, amend this motion. That if we are able to ascertain this report of what is owed by whom and what the payment plan is, because there should be notes within this. And if the notes aren't in that, they should be somewhere, what payment plans were already arranged. Because again, we are at the, we're being held hostage by Omnigo for a fee.
What have we been paying the fees for the last 10 minutes?
Well, because we, because we used that system moving forward.
Right, but if we're not with any report, we don't know what it is. What are we paying for?
That's what I keep going back to is... That's what I keep going back to is, we should have something cumulative that is, is at least backed up, that we should know about. So that if, you know, Richard, I'm sorry, go ahead, you have a question.
The other thing is that you said, uh, Omnigo, um, after three years, it turns into the state collection service. Does that get dropped off along with those reports? You know, it's on the state.
And that's what, that's what we've gotta find out. And this is where I'd like to amend this motion that if, through discussions, Molly and I have talked, Kirk and Molly and I sat and talked this morning, that if in the, in discovery of this report, we're able to realize that we have all the information we need. We're just gonna need to do some legwork of creating a spreadsheet or creating a, you know, historical data off of that. We can forego paying the six thousand dollars. This is, this is reminiscent, for those of you that were here, where we were paying that company to remind us to pay, make a payment. This is what I, what I feel like this money is for.
The other question I could have is, uh, what records does the court have of the payments made by the offenders? That they could possibly create it with some legwork in-house?
That's, and unfortunately, and, and through the, you know, through the process of discovery, we're being put behind eight wall right here. This was all brought forth a year ago in November. This, this process was known that it was gonna happen, the switch was gonna be made, it was known last November. I was privy to some emails that I requested, that even in September, we knew this was gonna happen. And now we're being kind of put between a rock and a hard place of, well, you gotta approve this because we need that information. When it should have never come to this. So my recommendation would be to amend the motion that if through discovery, we find that Omnigo is not needed for the historic information, that we do not make this payment.
I second that amendment.
And when's the, when's it due? When's the contract up or when?
Twelve thirty-one.
January one.
Yeah, we've known about this for thirteen months. And as a matter of fact, there was an in-depth discussion on it on September sixth and seventh.
We, meaning the court system and our, our systems in-house.
The, the, the parties that are involved in this, and it just kept getting dragged and dragged and dragged. And now we're being kind of held hostage as we have to do it. And I, I think it's a wasteful use of money.
Do we have any idea how much money it is?
That's the email I sent this morning, unfortunately, the clerk is on vacation until tomorrow. So I should be getting that information tomorrow.
You should be able to get this one.
Yeah, yeah.
And if you can't get it, we still really need this, then we're gonna approve it.
So my question.
Which you can't get it, we.
That's, that's where I would hope, and I don't know how to go about this, that you would allow a level of discernment between myself, the treasurer, and the set team supervisor to make that determination.
I don't know if we, depending what the dollar value is and the people that are gonna pay anyway.
Well, and again, my fear is, is that if that company shut down tomorrow and didn't, you know, shut down all their systems, we get, we, we should have this information somewhere, because, you know, I mean.
And we're, we're under cat track now, so we should be able to request it.
Yeah, and which we did. We did, we did get requested.
If we've got ten thousand on the books, that we're probably never gonna collect, because they couldn't pay it to begin with, is it worth spending another six thousand to find out what the number is that we ain't gonna get paid anyway?
So you're requesting to amend this motion to?
To allow us the opportunity to see what the, one, what we find out the, the dollar value is owed to the city. And two, uh, the level of knowledge we gain from the report, this query that they're going to run for us.
So Sean made the motion.
And I'm fine with that.
Did I make sense?
And then I second that motion and I will.
And between the three, you and the set team, you'll decide whether we even want it regardless.
It'll come back tomorrow night, Greg, so we'll have to.
Yeah, maybe nobody tomorrow night.
I should know by tomorrow night.
A little more information and reword.
The other report, the other report I won't have. That's gonna.
Authorize you three to make that decision based upon any information gathered between now and the time of the end of the contract, renewal of the contract.
So we have the motion, the amended motion, and the second, any further discussion? All those in, do you have something to say?
One thing, um, the company, if we don't renew the contract on December thirty-first, in all likelihood, if we offered to redo it in Jan, in the end of January, they're gonna take our money and get it anyway. If we don't renew right away, pretty good likelihood.
Well, I have proposed that, it's my understanding they have said December thirty-first or December thirty-first. You have to pay for upfront for the whole year, so there was no negotiating there.
Well, if you come in and offer late, was your payment, they'll take it, more than likely.
Get in the budget and get the money, we had to go another month, I bet you they'd take our money if we really decided we needed it.
I mean, we don't know that.
Yeah.
So, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Last item looks like it's to discuss and schedule January committee of the whole year.
And what's going on?
I think the, the problem is, is that the committee of the whole meeting falls on Martin Luther King Day, which is a federal holiday. Everything will be closed at city hall. So I think what we're proposing, or what has been, excuse me, has been proposed, I think that's what Becky was going to address, was the movement of the committee of the whole meeting to Tuesday night prior to the council meeting.
Or we combine them.
Or we might.
Yeah, yeah. Is everybody okay with?
Still starting at six thirty.
Still starting at six thirty.
Combining it.
So two meetings, both meetings on the twenty-third.
Kind of combining, yeah, yeah. I'd make that motion to.
I'll second.
Motion in the second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. And looking for a.
Motion to adjourn.
You have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
In the second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
There you go. They're gonna vote no once.
I guess.
Call the meeting to order, we'll start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please. Roll call please. Oh, sorry.
Michael Murray.
Yeah.
Rich Pearington.
Present.
Sean Zavinsky.
Here.
John Glenn.
Here.
Nicole Hart. Lamont Keefrick.
Here.
Nellie Peter.
Here.
Dean Peterson.
Here.
Travis Shulze.
Hey, is there anyone desiring to appear before the council? If not, we will move on, we'll go to the mayor's report. Just wanna give a kind of follow-up on what Joe Prost said last night, a big thank you to everybody that helped out with the special needs Christmas on Sunday, absolutely fabulous time, Santa came to visit. I'll share a couple stories that, well, just the one story, there was a young man that, uh, huge, huge, huge Sidney Crosby fan, plays for the Pittsburgh Penguins. And this is the amazing thing that Jenna Moser and, and her friend, you know, they, they, they do all the shopping. They're just, they're just amazing, they create these lists and, and this young man is probably twenty-two, twenty-three, he came over to me and saying, I've, I've already cried twice, I don't wanna cry anymore, because he, he said, look at my phone, and he showed me his screensaver was the Sidney Crosby jersey. And he had put that in that he'd love something like that for Christmas and they were able to find him one and, and, you know, so he just was, I mean, just in absolute heaven. And, you know, we're all older and there's a certain fat jelly guy with a beard that, you know, we maybe put to rest a while ago, but I wanted to share this with you, that my, my nephew, who doesn't necessarily care for their two new, new dogs, my brother and sister-in-law told Santa Claus about that. And that Santa walked over to him and said, Kenrick, we need to talk about Pip and Paisley. And the look on his face was how in the world do you know about Pip and Paisley? You need to be nice, or no footballs for Christmas. And, fine. But for those who did not have the opportunity to attend, Greg was down there, please watch his videotape. I'm, I'm willing to bet he captured the greatest of moments during, you know, it's no big secret, anybody knows me, that's not my absolute favorite holiday, but that day is just absolutely fabulous and I can't thank the community enough for all the people that reached out. I'd also like to thank all the people on Saturday night that came and contributed. We were able to, um, take whatever was left over from the special needs Christmas and delivered it yesterday to the Boys and Girls Club along with sixteen hundred dollars for them to do some rapid shopping so that their members that are in need can have Christmas presents on this Friday before they, they wrap up for the holidays. So again, thank you to everybody that had a part in it. There's, there's so many to thank, but I, I really, really have to call out Jenna Moser, she's just, without her, I mean, I, I, my responsibility is raising money. And I have no problem asking for money, but she, I mean, the hours of eight in the morning to midnight shopping is just crazy, the amount of stuff. And the way they organize it, it's just unbelievable. Uh, one other thing, perfect gift for the holidays, Alderman Zavinsky shared this with me. They're gonna be doing a fundraiser for the Historical Society on the historical preservation. This will be in Maine, but they are gonna be selling Tom Wopat tickets, everybody remembers from the Dukes of Hazzard. They'll be doing a dinner and a show, you can buy tickets for either or, you can buy tickets, I'm, I'm sorry, buy tickets for the dinner and the show, or just for the show. But I think if you just reach out to any member of the Historical Society, they'll be able to help you out, but it's for a fantastic cause, it'd be a really great time. On a side note, my brother Jim has seen him several times and said he absolutely puts on a fantastic show, he's very, very cordial, very, very small-town, so he's perfect, a perfect fit for us. So I'd like to say happy holidays, Merry Christmas to all of you. And again, thank you for everything you've done through the year. As we said, we haven't always agreed on everything, we haven't always seen eye to eye on everything, but you should all be very proud of yourselves and all of our department heads be proud of where we are as a city. You know, in, in our examination last night of where we're sitting currently, I think there are a lot of cities that would desire to be where we are in a, in a fiscal sense. And, and that is largely due to all the people sitting in this room. So thank you again, I hope you have the most peaceful of holidays. With that, we will move on, and we will move to the senior executive team, Kirk.
Good evening.
Good evening, Kirk.
Kind of have a laundry list of some of the activities we did this last month. We did meet with Virginia Creed, she's the new owner of the J and R Variety store. Very energetic and enthusiastic and ties in well with some of the things that the Historic Preservation Committee is potentially working on. She has a lot of interest in restoring old buildings and hopefully that'll, they'll complement each other very good. Also continued with meetings in Vanderwall, and we did meet with a couple of potential developers. Obviously, when things come to more fruition, we'll pass that information on, but you know how the discussions go as, as we get up to those points. Did some meetings with the DOT, um, three RT, also to discuss some IT issues and programs. More or less establish some protocols going forward, keep us both involved. And doing, I, I think we're gonna get some good things from that meeting. And obviously Molly's behind that, but I went to the meeting as well and it was good. We haven't, I haven't anyway, met with them for a while, so a lot of good things coming there, I think, with our IT. Board of Appeals and then union negotiations. Some personnel issues that were taken care of and ribbon cutting. Any questions?
Negotiation is for what department? Is that for the ambulance department?
Correct. All right, reach out if you have anything you want us to look at. Thank you.
Kirk. All right, we will, we will move to the public safety. Good evening, chief.
Good evening, everyone, you have my written reports, if you have any questions on that, let me know, otherwise. Couple bullet point items here, fire departments currently staffed with thirty-five firefighters, including deputy chief, likely, and myself. We're taking, currently taking applications through the end of business day on the twentieth of December. That's gonna create a eligibility list for future hirings going into twenty twenty-four, and I do see some openings that will be occurring. So I wanna just be prepared for that, so. Um, as most of you know, but I'll just read it quick, on November twenty-sixth, we battled a structure fire at ten thirteen Superior Avenue in an apartment above the Peking Chinese Restaurant, there were no injuries to report. The fire was ruled as undetermined, but cannot rule out possibility of a human error or malfunction in the building's electrical system. The fact is, an electrical space heater was used near the area of origin where the fire had started. So due to the extensive physical damage, due to the evidence, the exact cause could be unknown. And basically what ends up happening is, I think I've explained this before, that I'm not going to put that on the city, the burden of the cost that goes on to the insurance company, and the insurance company's gonna debate if they're going to send in electrical engineers and a team to come in there and diagnose every little thing to, to, to do it, and they decided not to do that in this case. So that's where you have to rule it as undetermined, you have to have an exact cause before you can rule it as anything else, so. With that said, I just want you to be aware that this was our fifth structure fire in the city this year. With the number of structure, sure, structure fires that we had, and the increase in call volume that we've had, this year's payroll budget has greatly exceeded what was budgeted for my department. In that aspect, it's also affected our fuel and supply budget, so hopefully we can get through the rest of the year here. We are over our call volume from last year, I'll have all the numbers for you in my annual report, but hopefully we can get through the rest of the year without any more big fires, so. Vehicle-wise, all apparatus are in good working condition, we did have our annual pump testing in November, all engines did pass pump testing, so. EMS-wise, we are currently fully staffed, we hired our last physician that was open here in the, the end of November, so that filled that. We're always looking for part-time EMTs and paramedics and we're always advertising for that. Probably the big one on the item here is huge thanks to the set team, Penny. We've been working very diligently on getting the, the union negotiation hopefully completed here this evening. With that, I believe we have a very fair package for, for the employees and I, I think it's something that both parties will be happy with, so. Ambulance vehicles, back to that two-six-nine ambulance that I've talked about for the last year and a half, they were supposed to take it in December. Now they contacted us late last week and said they're gonna move us to February again, so in February, they'll be hopefully taking it, it'll be gone for ninety days to get that remount done, so not holding my breath. Last item I had here is I just wanted to reiterate the VA billing. Three years ago when I took over, we were three hundred and fifty thousand-ish in whole outstanding billing. And as of today, we're the most current we've ever been with them. Fifty-four thousand dollars owed out right now, and that is a huge thanks to Christie, Candy, and Barb and their hard work at getting us where we need to be in the VA for stepping up their game and. for stepping up their game and having the automatic system that they have now. And it's just working also much better and, uh, saving everybody time. So just, uh, huge thanks to everybody for that. Otherwise, uh, I just want to wish everybody a happy holidays. Once we got some questions.
I've got a comment. Uh, looks like for the month of November, you had about a hundred thousand dollar operating margin.
On the ambulance service?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to the library. Don't look at me in that tone or voice, young lady.
I looked at you like we're moving on to the fun part.
There you go.
That's why Matt.
Moving on to the library.
We're moving on to the fun part.
Getting rid of these boring fellows. Let's move on to the fun people.
Let's move on to the fun, cool kids.
All right, will you turn?
Right.
Hello? Hello?
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. Um, I wasn't with you last month, so I have double figures for you today. October eBooks, two thousand one hundred and fifty-three, physical checkouts from the library in October, four thousand six hundred and five, for a total of six thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight items checked out from your Toma Library in October. Going on to November, eBook checkouts, two thousand and forty-three, physical checkouts, four thousand two hundred and five, total checkouts, six thousand two hundred and forty-eight items checked out from your Toma Library. We have a lot of things going on in January. We're moving ahead here, moving ahead. January in the children's department, we've got on January sixth, we've got a bad art contest. Even though it's in the children's department, it is open to everyone. So you can come and do some bad art, put your name on it, we will display it, and then we'll vote on it. There is a prize. They will not tell me what it is, but I'm rooting for Candy. So maybe, we'll see. We continue to have Legos on Wednesdays from five till seven and on some Saturdays. So you can call if you're interested in coming. Well, not you guys, but you know, if you want your people to come on Saturday, you can call and get what days those are open. We have Little Movers Storytime on Thursday at eight fifteen to eight forty-five, and that's before we open. So those little movers can run around. We have Teen Movie Night coming up on January fourth. We are just having things happening. Five Nights at Freddy, Teen Movie Night, January fourth, Family Movie Night, January eleventh, Teenage Mutant Ninja Turtles. We're doing a kindness craft on January twenty-seventh. We're not sure what that is, but we're going to have it. We're going to swap houseplants on January twenty-seventh, but same day we'll be trading houseplants. So if you have houseplants, maybe once you don't buy and want to move on to somebody else, that could be your time. And on January fourth, we will have Teen Night with anime and manga. We've done it before. It was okay. Hopefully more people will come to that. Continue to have weekly storytimes, Mondays, six-thirty, all ages. Tuesday, ten o'clock or eleven fifteen. That's for toddlers, but anybody can come. Any child can come. Wednesday, ten o'clock, baby time. That just continues to grow and grow and grow. Just a quick list of what we're doing in the adult department. In January, we will start an eight-week program. We do hot reads for cold nights. Every time you come in and check something out, put your name in a drawing. We're doing a craft club in February. We're giving away seats in March. We are going. I just finished an introduction to machine sewing. I taught that November and part of December. It went over really well. We want to thank the Friends of the Library who actually purchased six sewing machines. And that, that was great. We had our annual fundraiser at the Toma Library. Thank you for everybody who came to the fundraiser and just showed us support. Thank you to the Friends of the Library. I do have a bit of a problem though, is that the holiday train was here that night. So who do I need to call? Because that can't happen. We can't have them on the same night. So they're going to have to move. So if you guys have contact, let me know. I will call them. My intention was, does anybody have any questions for me? No? Nothing? Merry Christmas to everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We will move on to the senior disabled services.
Hello, everybody?
Pam.
Hi. First off, um, just a heads up on when we're closed for the holidays at the Senior Center. It will be Monday, the twenty-fifth and Tuesday, the twenty-sixth, and then, um, Monday, January first. But, um, and then the rest of the days are regular days. Um, in Nov-
Will you turn the microphone more towards it? I think it's pointing at the, that's part of the problem.
Okay.
Let's try it. Yeah.
November, um, the participant number was one thousand eight hundred and sixty-two, and the volunteer number was two hundred and thirty-six. Um, I just wanted to go over, since this is the time of the year people start looking at wellness particularly. And we have conditioning with Chad on some Sundays from two to three. And that's in our, um, newsletters and calendars on which Sundays those are. We added a new activity, core exercise building with Seagram. And that is on Tuesdays from ten-thirty to eleven for the core muscles of the body. And then we continue with the wellness exercise on Monday, Wednesday and Friday mornings, nine to ten. And then line dancing is on Tuesdays and Thursday mornings, nine to ten. So we have plenty of opportunities to come and exercise and do some cardio. Um, we will also offer physical activity for lifelong successors, in other words pals, when we have six to twelve people ready to do that program. A reminder, I, there seems to be a lot of surgeries out there at this time. It's, it's just the season. And we do have a medical equipment loan closet. And we do have a giving closet with incontinent products and miscellaneous things that are, are free. Uh, those all are donated things, so we can loan them out free or give them free. We also have another wellness, uh, a special needs wellness exercise class on Fridays from twelve to twelve forty-five. It's adaptive fitness for all class. And we also encourage people to join that. Um, our annual arts and craft fair was last month, and it was a very, it was successful. And, um, we raised about net income of about two thousand one hundred and seven dollars. And for us, that's very good. So I thank everybody who helped with that. What else did I want to? Oh, um, we're looking to partner with ADRC in Monroe County, the veterans, uh, a couple veterans organizations. And so we're looking for a few good men to do a men's group. And it's a cool, oh, also lacrosse, ADRC is involved, and for lacrosse. So it's quite a wide area. And it's for getting men, um, who need to be active, engaged, sharing skills, having fun and making contributions to the community, um, with their skills. And so that is in the newsletter too. I see those.
I need to add one more thing to my list.
And looking ahead, uh, we do have a couple, a volunteer or two. I know one for sure who will be helping prepare the taxes free. Um, and that's coming up. Um, people need to call.
Shh, shh, shh. Don't talk about taxes.
Don't talk about that yet. People can call me. There's limited time slots. That's why I'm bringing it up. They can call me and make an, and I have the appointment book for those volunteers. Any questions?
I heard that you opened up during the fire.
Yeah.
Thanks for doing that. I thought that was pretty cool.
It's, it was a perfect place to provide. And, and so many people did so many things. Um, like, um, with the food and, and Quick Trip with Food. And I, I, I hesitate to even say, start, start that list because so many-
Because there was a lot.
Yeah. Um, were involved that day. And it was-
It was, it was awesome though. Thank you.
For a disaster, it, it really-
Almost great.
And I have a new appreciation. I've always appreciated our fire people and stuff, but there, uh, when you see it close up, closer up, it's a whole different way I'm lucky at it.
Thanks, Pam.
Thanks for that contribution.
Okay. And we move on to the planning and building inspection report. Shane?
Good evening, everyone. So you've got the November building permit report in front of you. You can see there's twenty-four building permits issued in November. Um, permit fees collected at ten thousand four hundred and thirty-one dollars with a estimated project value just under two-point-six million. Um, Kiki doesn't have a code enforcement report attached. Um, this time of the year, you're not going to see much activity from the code enforcement until we start seeing some snow. Um, then you'll start seeing the sidewalk notices. Um, anybody have any questions on the actual building permit report?
Uh, question. The residents, uh, the new construction there in, uh, Windveco Park. I didn't see that listed on the, on the monthly report.
Yeah. Uh, the contractor, Toma Lumber, is having trouble, um, submitting their permit through the, all one, new one, having homes actually have to go through a state portal. And they're having trouble with their website. So I issued the permit, but it won't show up. It'll show up in December, but, um, they, Toma Lumber hasn't been able to process it to the state portal yet. That's the only reason it's not on there.
Question for you, Shane. On your, on here you have, on your, uh, where did I see that? Uh, Duck Edition, Country View Estates. What street is that on?
Um, unfortunately, that doesn't, that'll only come up in the notes on those, Sean. Uh, because the parcel, it's a mobile home parcel. It's one large parcel, not separate lots. So it, the notes don't show up on this report. But for the ones that are going to be, um, in an actual mobile home park, I can make an actual note in the project description if that would help.
That would be great. Cause I just noticed a few other things going on down there. Um, I'll give you a call tomorrow.
Sure. And then I've got some updates for everyone on some other projects in town. Three nineteen East Council, the home that was launched to a fire earlier this summer, um, that has been demolished. The property at one-ten East Council, uh, the property adjacent to the downtown information center, um, the developer who purchased that is looking to demo that building and construct a, either a two or three unit residential structure right there in its place. Um, so he's shooting for April on that. And the property at three oh, there's a small commercial structure at three oh-seven Superior Avenue, that's just north of the Carlton, that was purchased by Christopher Jennifer Poppy, the owner of three oh-nine Superior. And they demoed that small building. I think their intent there is to have some outdoor seating area for their restaurant on that north side of the building is what I've heard. So, um, the Peking restaurant that Tim had mentioned, uh, I issued permits today for street privilege permit and for interior demolition to board and construction on the cross. Um, so in the next day or two, you'll start seeing some dumpsters out on the sidewalk. Um, they'll have that entire parking stalls all closed down there. And you'll start seeing quite a bit of activity. Uh, and this is just for the interior demolition, um, board and construction. And I believe one or two other contractors are bidding on the actual renovation work once the demo's done also. So, and we did receive a final estimate from Keller for the library steps. Uh, so far it looks like that product's going to come in at around one hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. And the property seventeen fifteen North Superior Avenue, just south of Pizza Hut, has been purchased by Henry Troyer. And he intends to build a, uh, building there for his construction business, kind of a warehouse, showroom, things of that nature on that property. Any questions?
Um, what's going on with the, uh, theater?
Uh, I was contacted, contacted by areas of associates, engineering outfit. Um, they're preparing a proposal for the Hochuk Nation to redo their entire parking lot, all the blacktop and concrete. Uh, but other than that, Richard, I haven't heard anything specific back. I had sent an email to the gentleman with the Hochuk Nation who had rudically contacted my office way back when they originally closed, but I haven't gotten a response. Otherwise, we've, we've just heard the same rumors that everybody else has heard so far on it. So.
Yeah. It looks like they're looking, looking at doing some roughing work. I saw the material that's on site.
Yeah, I've heard the same. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Shane. All right. We will move on to the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion regarding second-hand or daily license application for Creative Tech Team LLC of Toma and the approval of minutes from November twenty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Move to approve. Second.
We have a motion by Zabinski.
I'm catching you.
Great.
And second by Peter. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the committee, uh, committee of the whole, I would entertain a motion regarding the Alliance Energy Easement Approval.
Move to approve the agent. Second.
We have a motion by Kiefer, a second by Peterson. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, I would entertain a motion regarding the resolution declaring official intent to reimburse expenditures from proceeds of borrowing.
Move to approve the resolution. Second.
We have a motion by Kiefer and a second by Yarrington. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I would entertain a motion regarding the resolution increasing agency fare for the City of Toma's shared ride service.
Move to approve. Second.
I have a motion by Zabinski, a second by Glenn. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I would, uh, entertain a motion regarding the resolution to authorizing payment of monthly bills.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Zabinski, a second by Kiefer. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I would entertain a motion regarding CP Wisconsin Development LLC lease.
Move to approve. Second.
We have a motion by Yarrington, a second by Zabinski. Any discussion?
I have a discussion.
I think we need more details on that lease.
So just want to point out that we have Jeffrey Brown, uh, here with his colleague online. If you have any questions, um, I guess we introduced this a while back. Uh, legal has went through the contract, made adjustments. Uh, the firm has also agreed with those. We tried to incorporate that into what's, uh, attached to your staff report as a complete document. Um, I guess if you were to look at the financing and I, I may butcher this, but, um, there's an initial option period of a thousand dollars that runs for six years. Correct me anytime I'm wrong. Uh, runs for six years. Uh, there's a twenty-five-hundred-dollar, uh, signing bonus, I believe it is. There's a twenty-five-hundred-dollar notice to proceed bonus. And then there's a five-thousand-dollar commercial operation bonus. So there's a number of bonuses in this structured lease, um, hitting benchmarks as we go. And then the, kind of the, the bigger number that, um, once everything's installed up and running would be up to twenty thousand dollars for that parcel annually. And again, if I'm-
I heard you're spot on here. Spot on.
Okay.
There is a one percent- There is a one percent annual escalator as a part of the, the annual payment and those payments are made quarterly.
So that, you know, usually that's the nuts and bolts of what people are interested in, the revenue that this could potentially bring in. I know John has brought up some issues with the long-term disposal or issues with that. I believe that we feel we're covered with the language that's in the lease. So otherwise, they're here to answer any questions you have and kind of keep it off from there.
I just have a question.
I'm sorry, Nellie, I'm going to interrupt real quick. But if there's any questions or any response, can you please step up to the microphone because of the people on the, thank you.
This one's for Kurt though. This came to the console, when? A year ago?
No, not a year.
About three months ago.
Yeah, I would say that neighborhood.
Okay.
And that was committee of the whole. We talked about it there. You kind of gave us direction to go out and continue, have legal look through the lease, talk to our partners at the landfill. Yeah, just kind of doing that vetting process and went back here to try to.
I was just trying to remember when it came.
Yeah, it's, it's been a while.
Okay. All right, that's kind of what I wanted to ask.
I just had one question. Is there a way you could put like a little, little paragraph summary? Cause once they start going in, everyone in town's going to be like, why did the city buy them or what did, you know what I mean? Just a little quick. This is the old landfill, land that we weren't able to use for anything, and now we're going to get money every year, you know?
It's like informational.
Yeah, just a little informational blurb, so then we don't have to all try and like answer the questions.
We would be glad to support that narrative as well as use it as an educational tool for, you know, how a project works. Why we chose to work on a landfill, why we're working with DNR and federal EPA on these types of projects. Yeah, we, we see this as a great opportunity to share the knowledge of our space with others. And most importantly, use it as an opportunity to show municipalities, like the city of Toma, show great leadership and smart land use planning with innovative concepts. And most importantly, can those concepts benefit the community in the form of lower electricity rates? That's all to be determined, but we're working in that direction to get there.
Thank you and thanks for doing the, the thing.
As you look at the timeframe right now, you'd open into six years to, to do, to activate the process of setting up and getting into operation. Do you anticipate that would be shorter than the full six years or not?
Great question. I would hope, I would love to start tomorrow, but unfortunately the members of the legislature in Madison have not decided on a pathway yet, but I can say that the expectation is that the community's sole legislation will get a hearing by February and there is an opportunity that the pathway moves forward. The construction of a project of this type, depending on when we start, can take up to a year, maybe a couple more months than that. So our goal is to be able to build this project as soon as possible for the benefits of, not only for the owners of the project who are ourselves, but also for the residents who would save money on their electrical bills.
So it could be as soon as two years.
Knock on wood, Richard.
That would be the earliest.
If you were, if you were the state cap, Richard, probably.
Like I said, that's the earliest.
Yeah. But yes, but when there's a, there's a significant amount of due diligence and environmental impact studies and working with the city's leadership on permitting and planning that goes into it. So that's the typical process.
So that's why there is the option time is so long because you don't even know if it's, if and when it's going to be approved at the state level.
That's exactly right. I mean, at this point.
It may not happen.
Unfortunately, that's a reality, right? We are taking a long-term look at Wisconsin and we're making investments here, even though there isn't a pathway for us yet. Only because we believe that ultimately there will be one and when there is one, we want to work in a way that shows we understand what Wisconsin is about, about what farmland is about, protecting that. And also how do you work with municipalities, public and private partnerships can work very well for the benefit of all, so.
And you hit the ground running when it, yeah, you're ready.
I hope so. I hope so. We'll be, we will be ready. I, I just want to say, we've been engaging with municipalities all across the state. Far north, down the southeast corner, out to Eau Claire. The team here at the city of Toma, between Becky and Kirk and the city attorney, has been some of the best that we've had the opportunity to work with so far. I will say that. And if all cities operated like the city of Toma, I think Wisconsin would be in a much better place.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it.
I would say that if you look at the Monroe Colony landfill at Ridgefield, the original section one might be also a good potential site.
We'll check into that. Thank you. Any, any other questions or comments? Thank you for your time. Happy holidays.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the approval of ARPA funds through judicial software. Prior to going into this, I have just handed you what we had discussed last night in regards to a query as regards the historical data on this. We did run the query on the year two thousand nineteen. This is what the year two thousand nineteen looks like, based on the amount of people that still owe money to the city of Toma. This averages about three pages or three people per page. It's fifty pages. Now, I am not an expert on these things. I do not proclaim to be an expert on these things. However, when I take a look at this historical data, when I look at the things we talked about last night, this is not a sixty-two hundred dollar project. This could be upwards of a thirty thousand dollar undertaking. Because if we don't get everything paid off this year, then we have to renew this next year. Which is another sixty-two hundred if it stays at the same price, which then could be another sixty-two hundred the following year. The one thing that I'm proposing and I, I, in discussions with several people, this is the way I see it. Everything you have in front of you right now, I had to white out things that are private information, okay? But it contains the person, it contains the summons number, it contains their date of birth, it contains all their pertinent information for who they are as, as an individual. Data entry, in my opinion, again, let me reiterate that, in my opinion. Data entry for something of this nature could be as simplistic as, I'm going to use my name as an example. If Michael Murray is in here and then I type in Murray Michael into a, into a spreadsheet. I type in Murray Michael, I put in the summons number and I physically number these pages. Fifty pages, these pages. I put Glenn, John in there. I put Zabinski, Sean. I don't have to put all the information in here, I'm just putting those things and I'm putting the page number. Once I'm on a, on a spreadsheet, I can now alphabetize this. If a person from the year two thousand nineteen comes in and says, I had a bill in two thousand nineteen, I still owe money on this. Anybody with this, three hole punched, has a folder for two thousand nineteen. When they look up Mike Murray, it's going to stay right in there, what the summons number is and what page it's located on in this. So anybody opening this up should be able to open directly to that page and have that information. Is this going to take data entry? Yes. But me putting in one hundred and fifty names with the summons number with the page number would probably take about two hours maximum. If we did this for each year, now, there is a, there is a little gray area in this because there really is no true line of when it goes to state collections. However, this query has already been built. So what it is we are looking for simply has to be entered in as what year now we're looking for. My assumption would be that two thousand eighteen would probably be smaller than this. Two thousand seventeen would be maybe even smaller. Two thousand twenty might be bigger because fewer things have come up. The point being is, is we as a city determine where we're going to go with this. Do we want to go back seven years? Do we want to go back eight years? Do we want to go back nine years? We can determine that. However, the data entry, the time needed to do something like this, to put it into a file and create your own little logging system, in my opinion, would be much less expensive than dropping sixty-two hundred dollars a year to keep this as a historical data resource. I'll take any questions and I'll answer the best I can then.
So, question, you first.
If you do a query, could that data rather than be done, be downloaded into a zip file?
We're working on that.
It could be, you don't even have to do the data entry, you just have to be able to go back to the zip file and check it.
Well, you go back to the zip file. The reason I'm saying the data entry is it, it, it expedites and it becomes more efficient. The, the limited number of entering a name and a page number in accordance allows me to, when a Richard Yarrington walks in, I don't have to flip through fifty pages. It, it lists right what page it's on and I can find it quickly. Now, there, there may be the ability, again, this is something that we have to figure out, but in the interim, could it be done easier? Perhaps. But by doing this query, by printing it off year by year, you can create your own data system pretty easily.
My question is, is this a software system that you've had already or is this something new?
Yes, we've had it. The thing is, is that the, the police department is shifting away from it, okay? In order for us to maintain this, the only real use we're going to have of this is historical data because moving forward, it's a new system we're going to be using. That is the, that is the main usage of, of this system is historical data.
Question. If you go back, like say, six years, maybe not even quite six years, or how much money would you, how much money would we be losing if we didn't go back even further as a city?
It's, it's tough to say because, you know, that, that's a subjective approach to it because.
Cause I'm assuming if you don't go all the way back, it's going to drop off and it's going to be null and void.
Well, but about a year ago, I mean, what did we drop off? Thirty thousand dollars?
Would you go after seven years, you load it off?
Seven years.
Yep.
Yeah, so I mean, we basically just looked at anything that was older than seven years and.
So sometimes the max.
So we could print these for seven years. And create a historical data.
Six and write off the seventh or whatever we're going to do.
Right. And then, and then, you know, so if we did seven years, so if we just used, and I'm just using hypothetical number, if we use seven years and this was seven years ago, okay, and if we took the philosophy of after seven years that they haven't paid, we're dropping it off. As of December thirty-first next year, this goes in a.
We drop it each year, we just keep it.
And then what happens is by the end of the seventh year, the new system we're using now has the historical data that we need.
So, question. I see that the judge is here. Is there any information you can share?
I like that idea of your, how you put it. I'm wondering if we shouldn't do this for one year and come back and visit it next year. What I think it is, there, there are a lot of tickets out there that are not there yet. And that could be up to a hundred thousand dollars worth of tickets. I'll give you an example. Juvenile's right now that are sixteen years old, the ticket might be ninety-two dollars and fifty cents. When they're seventeen years old, now they can go into that collection, but they're not there yet. So how much do we have in limbo right now? I can tell, penny I.
Well, the disappointing part to me is the fact that we knew of this over a year ago. We knew we were switching to this. We knew that this was coming down the, and, and we're now being kind of held hostage on this of sixty-two hundred dollars we don't have as a city. And as recently as September, this was discussed between the agencies that were going to be in use. And that's where the disappointment lies for me, is the fact that, you know, I'm privy to some emails that were sent. And these things should have been handled months ago. And now here we are in, you know,
December.
In December, a week away from and going, well, let's just drop sixty-two hundred dollars of money we don't have because we didn't handle this a year ago like we should have. And that's, that's hard for me to swallow.
Then I guess that's, that falls on me.
No, I don't believe it does.
Well, it does. I'm, I'm elected, I'm the minister, I just, I'm judge of that court.
Well, whether, whether you are or you aren't, it's still a matter of, these conversations were happening a year ago. And nothing came of them. And it's unfortunate because now we're put in a tough situation of, you know, what happens next year then? Because anybody that's fourteen right now, in two years, by next year, now they aren't into the system either.
Like I say, I'm, I'm just thinking if we did this for one year and come back and revisit it next year. And then, you know, I'm just, I'm just telling you, like, we don't know what's out there.
So what you're saying, Judge, is that we need it?
Yes. I don't want to take the chance, I guess.
Anything in the new system, well, anyone coming in, a minor, will be in a new system. So when, when will it work itself out? When would be the earliest?
Well, that's what we're wondering, what the year is going to do for us. What do you think?
You mean as far as getting this, sorry, you mean in terms of getting this on the system, you mean?
Yeah.
I guess it depends on how long it's going to take to have that done.
I'm not a expert on the computer, but if I was going to come in and talk to someone, who do I talk to for, this is a PDF, you can scan this. PDF file, years ago we converts it to Excel, we clean up Excel files if we have. You might not have to enter it, it's just stop, it might be, it might be pretty quick to put it in Excel.
Do we have a file of people that are under a certain age?
Sure.
What's that?
I, I would assume we would, yeah.
Because here's, I guess my question is.
It's not just the underage, it's, it's all that are out there.
Right, but I'm, I'm, I'm not an expert on this.
Okay.
So my question is, is where then do they exist? So what we're saying is, kid that comes in that's fifteen years old that came to your court two months ago. Fifteen, is that the right age we would look at? Because when they turn sixteen, then, when they turn seventeen.
Then they're adults.
Okay. But they won't be in here until they're seventeen. So then why do we not have a file of those people?
We have a file right now that tells me, the people that are already on the payment plan right now is not in that. You won't see them, not in collection. They're on the payment plan.
But these are only people that are in collections?
That's correct. That's correct. So that means they're probably the ones that ain't going to pay any money.
So, well then my, then my question is, if these are the only people that we have in collections, okay? Where is the file of the people that have payment plans?
We have a file.
Okay, so you have the file of people that have payment plans. Where is the file of the kids that are fifteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, that don't fall categorically into the adult? So that, where is the file where their names are in it?
Can't answer that. I don't know that.
Okay, but there is a file that should exist.
I would, it's a.
Because again, if it's going to fall into this system in two to three years. But again, it wouldn't fall into this system in two or three years unless they defaulted on their payment then.
Exactly.
But we should have a file of that now, so it shouldn't be a necessity. Because we should have a file showing what they owed, which we can then keep track of. And if they don't pay it, we then make a system of our own showing what they did or didn't pay.
Can't answer that.
Well, if they're making payments, they're making it either to the treasurer or to your clerk, right?
Yes, yes.
So they must be entering that debt payment receipt into a, into some type of, of file.
So just to clarify, clear one thing up, what he has there is from Omegle, so that is, that would include those underage people making a plan. So we would take the payment, Janice would then enter it into that system.
So this system, this query that was run out of two thousand nineteen
Yes.
will have people that are on a payment plan. will have people that are on a payment plan, will have the people that, that defaulted. It is every penny that is owed to the City of Toma.
It should be.
In this, if everything has been filed, has been...
Straight out of the system.
Right.
Yep.
So if I run a query of two thousand twenty-three, this is going to contain people who might even be fourteen or fifteen at the time because they've been put on a payment plan.
It should. It just wouldn't differentiate whether they have been sent to state debt collections or whether we're just collecting...
But shouldn't we have a file on who's been sent to state debt collections?
We should, yes, yes.
We should have that file. We should know who's been sent to state debt collections and who hasn't.
We should have that.
Then, then that eliminates the necessitation for the system then. Because if I run the query of the year two thousand twenty-three, it's going to show me everybody that got a ticket this particular year, everybody that, that is in a payment plan or not in payment plan, who's defaulted, who hasn't. It's going to show me everything that we have in our system if it's been entered correctly and been entered in the way that it's supposed to be entered. So, anyb, the, the, my thing is, is we're not going to have somebody mysteriously show up in this two years from now that was never in the system because they have to be in the system if they've got a fine structure. If they have been assigned a fine, whether they're paying it or not, it's in this system. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah.
So regardless of their age, it's going to show up in here.
That's, that's what Tom likes to do, anything that's in there.
That is my understanding, because that's the court software, that's the Omnicall. So, it would be my understanding that any court issues...
Any fine structure that's been issued by the court is in that system. So if we print it off, it's going to tell us everybody, regardless of age or whatever, or whatever the fine was or what it was for, it should show everything that's in there.
Does that list show you if, if they're paid or not? Is that just open ones?
This is open ones, this will, all the open ones.
Anything that's cold, paid and cold is gone.
Non-existent, because it, it, the only way it exists in the court systems any longer is the fact that it happened and it's been resolved.
So it drops off.
Yeah, not, not dissimilar to, you know, like, I've gone in and checked things enough myself on, on CCAP and after a certain time, you know, I had a speeding ticket or whatever, it, you know, paid, it just drops off after a certain amount of time. It just, it's not visible anymore, for whatever reason, for whatever, you know.
Does our new system have capability of backdating the, this information? So that our new system has actually the old system and it may even be cheaper than the six thousand dollars to get it put into the new system?
Problem with, the problem with new system to old system is that, as, you know, just like opening the hood of a car, nobody can ever build and create the same hood latch.
But we're talking about opening our own database thing and doing it ourselves. Could that be incorporated into the new system?
It, it, it can, I mean, we can create our own files within the new system. We're, we're still going to have to hold, you know, this, it's still going to have to exist because for each year, it's going to drop off and each year we're going to get rid of one folder because we're going to put seven years as our, seven years as our pinnacle. Each year, we're just going to drop it into the garbage can metaphorically.
So, I have a question.
If I understood what was mentioned last night, after three years, it gets turned over to the state tax intercept, right?
That's, that's not completely true. Part of the, it, it, it is, it could be three years, but it also could be the fact that somebody's entered into an agreement plan and they defaulted on the agreement plan, it can go to the, it can go to the state.
And sometimes they come back again, I put them back on it again, and that happens frequently.
Right. But again, I don't...
So those are the ones that are not in there, you won't see that.
Anybody that owes the city money should be in here. Any payment plan that's been arranged, but how, if anybody's arranged a payment plan, it's not going to eliminate it from, from the fact that they owe us money because it shows here total amount of payments up here in the upper right-hand corner. And then it shows what's still owed down below.
I'm still thinking the old system has that, therefore, and we don't have it.
Is, as I'm looking at this, on this one right here, it shows total of payments to this point is fifteen dollars and there's still a hundred and sixty-two outstanding, which tells me that that's a person who's on a payment plan or whatever, that they've come in and made... That they've come in and made payments. I'm looking at one right here where two hundred and seventy-six has been paid and there's two hundred and forty-two still remaining. So, it tells me that in this system, if people are making pay, well, whether they're making payments or not, because total payment's zero, balance due three thirteen, you know, these are from the year two thousand nineteen. Hundred and fifty dollars paid, thirty-seven dollar balance, zero paid, four hundred and thirty-nine balance. So this shows me people that are making payments and people that have not made a payment.
So what Judge is saying, you're saying that we don't need it and Judge is saying we do need it. You're saying just get rid of, not use it, this software anymore and Judge is saying...
Well, my belief in everything I've investigated on this is that this software contains nothing but historical data. Historical data that we can print off, maintain for ourselves, run our own little data entry system on it and year by year dispose of it.
How do you get it from a, our old company?
Because you, you run a query, just like we ran a query this morning. This query was built on December thirteenth in order to run year by year. As a matter of fact, I, I believe your clerk started the query. Started this query, now we just going year by year, we print it off, we create this file, this is two thousand nineteen.
Worst case scenario, we have seven of those.
There's seven of these, exactly.
You have to go through them.
Exactly.
So everything is recorded.
Right.
Everything is recorded, every, um, with every payment, every fine, it is recorded and we have, uh, in some kind of software.
Do you want me to get her on the phone?
If, if, if we have payment plans, okay, then we should have a file of payment plans. Because if your clerk drops over tomorrow, somebody needs to find, they know somewhere, that there's a payment plan structure set up for these people. Do we have that file?
Yes.
Okay, so this will list everybody that owes the city money.
You should be able to take that query and compare it against the file that they've already got in the court, clerk or court's office and they should match.
Absolutely.
How much that person has paid on their payment plan.
Because if, if we are doing our books correctly, this payment of two seventy-six and balance due, if that person walked in tomorrow and paid, you know, fifty dollars or forty-two dollars off this remaining balance of two forty-two, if I ran this query next week, it should now show the balance due is two hundred dollars because it's a data entry system where we're just saying they paid this much and it's, and it's, you know...
Entered into that program, it was still on that program.
So she keeps up, she keeps up with it kind of, and so we're aware of it? The clerk?
I just want to close by, I'm still worried about that hundred thousand dollars that's out there that you may not see.
But what, but where is that, where are we getting that number from? Where, where are we getting a number that a hundred thousand is out there that we're not seeing?
There's things you're not seeing there, is what Janice is telling me.
Well, then who's seen them?
Nobody's seen them.
Well, that's what scares me. How, how do we have a system that says that somebody owes us a hundred thousand dollars and we have no proof of that?
That's why we're asking the company to, to keep us on for a year to get that information. If somebody comes in tomorrow to make that payment, is he showed up on that list, maybe he's not there? How do we know when he owes, when he owes, why he owes it?
If he's not on that list, they're not going to know either because that's their list.
Where is she getting the number of a hundred thousand dollars of this mysterious thing that's owed, but we don't know who owes it? How do we not know who owes us a hundred thousand dollars?
What do you see in collections that's owed us right now, like a hundred thousand dollars?
This, this isn't just collections though, this is people who are making payments.
Has Tom seen what you have? Has anyone shown it?
I've not seen that.
Yeah, could you share?
Come here, take a look at this.
Janice is available if you want her. She's available. She's available. Ask Tom, I don't know if he wants, he wants... He is available, if you want me to get her.
So if you look at here, okay, and then you look at here, it shows us that people have been making payments and this has existed. Total of payments, zero, that's what's owed. So you have people that have been making payments and people that have not made payments. People that have, you know, been making payments and people that have not made payments.
You got this today?
Yeah, yeah, took them literally three minutes to print it off. Get it on the phone.
Yeah. Hey, we just needed to ask a few questions that neither myself nor Judge knows. So I'm going to put you on speaker, all right? They have a few questions, all right? Okay. You there?
Here's Janice.
So, Janice, this is Mike. We ran the query for two thousand nineteen and it was just, it was the number, it was the year that we chose was two thousand nineteen to run. My question is this. In this query, it shows people that have made payments, people that have made no payments.
Yep.
So, Judge is concerned that we have a, a number of people that are sitting in limbo who aren't in this system. Who would those people be?
As far as FDC or, so I, kind of how I explain to you is, so, before SDC, I started entering people into the TRIP, which is a tax intercept program. So eventually, the tax intercept program, which is also run by the Department of Revenue, is going to cease. But right now, so I have old tickets out with them and then when SDC started, which is the state debt collections, then I started entering people into that system. So, I'm pretty current with them except for, so, at the point where somebody is eligible or they haven't paid their tickets and if they aren't eighteen, you can't enter them into the state debt collections. So, there are many tickets that when I'm going through, then, so you can enter tickets into the state debt collections ninety days past their due date. So, you've given them time to pay, you, we always give sixty days in court and then you have to do another thirty days past there, so they have to be delinquent by ninety days.
So I'm, I'm, I'm... I'm sorry, I interrupted, but I'm...
People that are, um, not eighteen, but now that we've been in the state debt collections for numerous of years, if I, whenever I catch up, then you could go back through and then enter those people now that have become of age that you can enter into the state debt collections.
So, as I'm, as I'm looking at this, if, if somebody's passed ninety days in state debt collections, will somebody that's in state debt collections still show up on a query?
They should, because there should still be an outstanding balance. They don't, we don't take them, which I, I, maybe other departments, we do not have and turn them into a bad debt expense. So, we can collect, and I, I believe the ambulance has a number of years, but municipal court does not have a, a time limit on that. As long as you have started the collection process and whenever time it is, then you can enter them into the state debt collections. And honestly, like, I have people out there that I'm collecting from more than ten years ago.
Okay.
Do you have a sheet? I think the question ultimately was, is do we have files and/or the data sheets outside of your computer system that, that we'd be able to at least have the data, right? To make sure that we're not missing data?
No, I think that, I think the question I would have is, is so, if somebody comes into the court system and they're sixteen years old, okay?
Is he currently sixteen?
Yeah, they're currently, they're, they're, you know what, they're currently seventeen and they're going to turn eighteen in five months, okay?
Sure.
So here we are sitting in December, they're going to turn eighteen in May, right? Will their, will their information that they, you know, that, whatever the fine for, at the age of seventeen, and Judge issued them a fine of two hundred dollars? They, they paid nothing yet, okay? And they, they got this in, in October, they paid nothing. If I ran a query today for the year two thousand twenty-three, would they show up in that query as still owing two hundred dollars?
Correct.
So then why do I need, the thing is, is that we're saying that these people that are seventeen years old, will, they, they won't show up. If they have a debt that's been assigned by the, the, the judge and it shows up in the system, then it will show up in the query and we can categorize it into the query based on their age. And then when they turn eighteen, if they're not paying it, we can manually enter it into the state collection, debt collection system. Because they're still showing up in the system.
I have to get them into the new system at some point because that's how we're going to account for anything that's outstanding.
Right, but I mean, we still have, when we run the query, we still have the information we will need to enter them into the new system. Everything that you're going to need to enter them into the new system exists in this query based on their date of birth, their, their driver's license number, their address, their offense, their summons number. That's all listed in here, things that we're going to have to transfer whether it's this year or next year.
Hundred percent right.
I guess I don't exactly have an answer, other than if, if I don't have that access to, I guess at some point I can, or if, I guess if we can figure that out, but I'm going to have to enter them off of a piece of paper rather than the ticket or being able to put up the information as far as they paid, they didn't pay.
Right, but again, the person that...
And, and honestly, I don't, maybe I need to check with the state on this because I won't have any data as far as their ticket, the traffic stop, they didn't come to court, they came to court or whatever. I, honestly, I, I will lose all those records.
But how are we losing a record when you just said the record would be in there? You just said in the query, it's going to show up, because I'm looking at the query right now that gives me the summons number, the date and the time, the officer, the offense, the local ordinance broken.
Does it tell you, okay, I, I don't know what your query is that you ran and then even what you're looking at, Mike.
Well, it was created on December thirteenth. It was created on December thirteenth and I don't know who created it, but, you know, in my conversations with the chief of police, they didn't create the, 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 the query. Was it, did you, did you like request a query on December thirteenth?
I sent off an email to them to see if they could create something for me
And that's what this base...
So that it has the information that I'm looking for.
Well, I'm, I'm telling you what the information is on the query that you created. Is a summons number, the summons date, the time, the officer, the offense, the ordinance that was broken, the total of payments up to this point in time, the balance due, their name, their address, their date of birth, their driver's license number. It, what else would we need? What is, what is missing in that?
And, and I'm just, okay, so say someone comes in and they have a, a background check for the military. I will not be able to offer any court information for that information, for that person.
What court information won't you be able to offer?
The disposition of court, when they came to court, did they plead guilty? Was it amended to something else?
Well, how do we do that now?
I would pull up the record on the court program and I would print them off something or I would provide that information to their recruiter or...
Well, is it, is this court program tied to this, this system?
To the new system?
No, to the Omnicall. Is, is the notes that you, the notes that...
We will lose, we will lose Omnicall.
Right, we'll lose Omnicall, but are, are the notes...
Omnicall will have it printed.
That, that, we'll have it printed, but what you're saying is that you won't be able to pull up something regarding...
So we're going to be able, we're going to print from people that have, whether it be a closed account or an open account or something like that and be able to provide someone with a court document? Because once, and I understand this, once Omnicall is, we no longer pay the premiums, they shut us off and we have zero.
Well, nobody will be ready for that.
Right, so we're going to pay sixty-two hundred a year. But this doesn't make sense. My, my problem is...
For me to be able to get that information and then transfer it over to the new program, then we will have all that.
But if, why don't we have, my question would be this. If Joe Smith comes in here and he's going to, and he had a ticket in, in his court system when he was just... and he's going to, and he had a ticket in, in his court system when he was just turned eighteen and there was some plea agreement and it was, you know, blah, blah, blah and you know, and these notes on how it was handled, if, if that's in Omnicall, then can't we add that to the query of any notes that, that accompanied this file? Because as I understand it, you can build a query however you want.
And we're going to create a query on somebody that may be already closed? I mean, because we're talking about a query now, we're talking two different things. We're talking a query about trying to collect money and having documentation to know someone comes in and paid, I have to somehow, I guess, figure out where that ticket would be.
How many, how many requests do we get from the military on background checks?
I don't know. I, I, I mean, not a ton, but honestly, I mean, I, I believe and, and I can check and, and whatever. I mean, per se, if someone comes in and does some kind of a background check, I hope to keep records for seven years.
Well, then these records should be in our system, not in somebody else's where we're going to be held hostage. Because right now, we're being held fiscally hostage by saying, well, you know, we didn't keep these records ourselves. We, we, we entrusted somebody else to do it. Now we're going to, so we're going to have to pay them sixty-two hundred dollars a year for the next seven years? That makes no sense.
Or if they raise it to two hundred thousand.
Right.
We're stuck if they want it.
I was looking to keep the program long enough to be able to transfer data from one program to another.
And not another year. That's why I'm saying one year.
I'm not asking for it for seven years. I'm asking for it to keep it because I had two months in which to get my data and go to this new program.
You had more than two months. The, you were, you were notified in, in November of two thousand twenty-two.
But were we on the new program?
That they were notified that we were going to the new program.
I was not until when?
Until we opened.
Until I contacted them in the fall.
But when, when is a matter of.
You whip it.
But when is a matter of semantics?
You guys don't make your choice.
But when is a matter of semantics? You were notified that it was going to happen over a year ago.
Okay.
That's why, that's why I said, we're just asking for one year if that works for us to get all that data.
But, but the, but where is this data? Where are these notes? Where, where are the notes?
In my program.
Okay, so this program, can we check tomorrow morning with them and see if they can run a query that will give us not only open but closed? Because if that's things that we've handled in the past, they should also be able to ascertain anything that we've closed up to this point in time because it is all data that we've done with them.
I'll turn to them tomorrow.
Okay?
All right.
Thanks, Jan.
Just thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
My question would be, is there something that we can table, table this?
No, we can't because we're under.
Under the gun at, January one, yeah.
Okay.
Can we still give the authority to Mike like we did last night to make a decision before December thirty-first if we can make it work and if we can't, we'll have to do it?
If we know more tomorrow?
You know, this, something came before this council a hundred years ago and again, everything that comes before us is a subjective topic and we all have to make decisions based on our, our own beliefs and our own systems and our own, you know, what I'm taking from that conversation is that our biggest concern is we're going to lose notes on if somebody comes before us and requests a background check. A number of years ago, the, we had a, a person that wanted to come in and wanted to evaluate the decriminalization of cannabis and they wanted to form a committee for it. And when I started looking at it, that we were issuing a citation for ten, like ten citations a month and it started occurring to me that we're going to form a committee that was going to involve the, the city administrator, the city attorney, the chief of police, all this stuff for, and, and the municipal judge.
And we actually did.
For some, well, we didn't. We didn't form that committee.
Yeah, we put the, and, yeah, we, yeah, we're on there.
Well, but to affect point zero, zero, one percent of our population. You know, we're investigating something that affected point zero, zero, one percent of our population. My, my, my statement is, are we really getting that many inquiries and is it really a state mandate that, that we're going to spend sixty-two hundred dollars we don't have?
I think we have to figure out whether or not, what can she get from the data because you laid it out.
That's, that's.
And two, the issue is the court records and our requirements under the statute to maintain court records. And that I can look at first thing tomorrow morning as well to have some specifics because I don't want us to not have the records that we need. What do, what, what court records are imperative to maintain?
And it sounds like she wants us to, to buy her a year so she can get all that data and enter it into the new system. Well, if we can get it all in a hard copy, she can still have a year to get it entered into the system. If we get a hard copy.
But good point. Does that work?
Yeah.
I think we just need to give some flexibility. So I, your, the answer to the question is yes, you can make that motion. It does put something on you, but.
It is the motion we made last night.
Okay, I wasn't feel last night.
No, that is the motion that was made last night was to, if we can feel that we can ascertain the information that we need, that to myself, Molly, Kirk, that we make the decision as to how to handle this. There was not a motion.
Do we need a new motion for that?
I make the motion. You make a motion that we appoint mayor and the set team.
And the judge should be involved too in the proceeding.
And to see if we can get that data.
And Penny, I would say.
And Penny and Janet. I mean, Janet's the one who's just got to feel comfortable that she has the information that she needs or if we have to pay for a year, I mean, even though we don't have the money. But if we can ascertain the information that she's happy with, she's still got a year to put it in and we don't have to pay the sixty-two hundred. But if she can't get the information that she needs, then you got to make a decision.
I have a question, how much is needed too?
The motion, the motion would be to approve pending.
Motion would be to authorize you and the set team to make a decision, yea or nay.
Right.
On the decision, either up to.
Or sixty-two hundred.
Up to that sixty-two hundred.
Yep.
Okay, I'm just going to read.
One time.
All at this point? I have motion by Peter, motion by Peter. I don't have a second yet.
Yes.
Oh, sorry, second by, sorry, Richard. Motion by Peter, second by Yerington to authorize the mayor and senior executive team to make a decision on the purchase of software up to the amount of six thousand one hundred ninety-one dollars of our funds pending new information.
It's the renewal, isn't it? It's the renewal of the.
Renewal, yeah.
Of the renewal.
It's not a perk, it's a renewal.
So the mayor?
I forgot. I don't remember.
Kirk?
The judge and Janet, is that all involved in making this?
So not just the mayor and the senior executive team, you want the mayor, Kirk?
The judge and the clerk.
Yeah, we want Janet to be happy that she's got the information that she needs.
And the city attorney.
Maybe too. She's part of the set team.
Clerk.
Someone potentially having his balls.
Banner, yeah.
City attorney.
Mayor, set team, and the judge.
So mayor, senior executive team, judge, city attorney, and clerk, clerk of courts?
Yep.
Is there any more to say?
Any further discussion?
All of the favor.
Hi.
All right, I entertain a motion regarding the appointment of the twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five election officials.
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion by Yerington, a second by Peter, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I would entertain a, a motion to go to closed session.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Zabinski, a second by Peter. All the, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are now adjourned to closed session.